Consolidated Planning Board to order will begin with the roll call.
Helen Jenkins. Helen Jenkins is absent. Dudley Amproda.
Here.
Dudley Amproda is present. Neva Hassanin here. Neva Hassanin is present. Jamie Hoffman.
Here.
Jamie Hoffman's present. Andy Mafford.
Here.
Andy Mafford is here. Jason Rice. Jason Rice is absent. Michael Houlihan.
Here.
Michael Houlihan is present. Stephanie Potts. Stephanie Potts is absent. Vince Caristo.
Here.
Vince Caristo is present. Peter Benson.
Here.
Peter Benson is present. John Newman.
Here.
John Newman is present. Mr. Chair, there are six members and two alternates present. Since a member of the county and a member of the city are absent, would you like to appoint both alternates as regular voting members tonight?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the January 15, 2019 meeting. I took a look at them. I actually wanted to applaud staff for capturing what was a lot of material and names and all that sort of thing. I thought they, staff did a great job of keeping the minutes of that meeting. I didn't see any changes, but if anybody else did, feel free to voice those. Otherwise, entertain a motion. Motion from Peter.
Seconded.
Seconded from Neva. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seeing none, the minutes from the January 15, 2019 meeting are approved. Move on to public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. I would imagine most folks are here for the agenda item, the public hearing, but if anyone has any comments about anything else that's on their mind, feel free to come forward now and state your name and let us know what you're thinking. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to staff comments. Any particular comments from staff? Okay, the main event, public hearings. Missoula Area Mapping Project Amendment to the Missoula County Growth Policy. That's a county item, of course, from Andrew Hagemeyer, oh, excuse me, Andrew Hagemeyer and Christine D'Asenzo. A couple of prefatory comments on this. I'm sure everybody is aware that this is the second public hearing that we've held, or should I say, a continuance of the public hearing that began about a month ago. Because there are a large number of people here to speak on this item, because we all want to get home before, you know, February 20th, if possible, I'd ask folks to keep comments to around three minutes. I'll keep track of time and I will gently let you know when the three minutes is up. Another thing, I know a lot of times, you know, there's kind of critical mass about an issue from a particular neighborhood, and so there might be a lot of people from a particular area that all have the same thing to say. By no means do I mean to stifle your comment. Please come forward, but if you feel like what you are thinking and what you have to say has been encapsulated by prior comments, feel free to mention that and be even briefer than the three minutes, just for the sake of moving things along. I don't think that saying you agree with previous comments by any means diminishes the importance of that issue in the eyes of the board. And then the last thing I'll say is, I think if we could start with comments from folks who did not comment last time, so any new comments tonight, maybe we can begin with those, and then if there are folks who, you know, feel the need to comment again, having made comments the previous meeting, come on up after that. So, staff, do Andrew and Christine, do we have anything, anything to kind of open up with, or should we just get right to comments? Okay, so the public hearing that was opened at the last meeting shall continue henceforth. If you have any comments about this item, feel free to come forward and just state your name for the record. If it's a difficult name to spell, please spell it for the record and we'll be off to the races.
Jeff Smith with WGM Group. I'd like to thank everyone that's been involved with the land use map update, particularly CAPS and Planning Board for the opportunity to comment today. No matter what projects and clients come up at varying times and the continuum of the map update process, and we're here today towards the end of it, I'm here representing the Raybine family who owns 160-acre piece of property on the west side of Deshaulane. Before you is a request made on behalf of the Raybines to modify the proposed designations on their property to better fit in with the character of the area and their plan for the property. If you'd please turn to page three of the requested letter before you, you'll see an aerial photo depicting the subject property and the surrounds. Agricultural uses to the west, there's residential to the south, see to the north, Missoula Trap and Skeet Club and I-90, and along with Deshaulane and the concrete construction and industrial uses that bound the east side of the site. Site's also bisected by a high-pressure gas pipeline. Current designation for this 160-acre property is planned neighborhood. Based on the surrounding uses and the importance of the Y for industrial uses, we request a modification to the current proposed designation to allow a range of land uses. If you'd please turn to page one, you'll find a graphic representation of the land use designations we're requesting. Please note, the designations have been modified slightly based on conversation with CAPS after we submitted this comment. First, we request to place industrial uses along the west side of Deshaulane via the industrial center designation. This best matches the uses on the east side of the road, provides additional industrial lands for the Y, and allows for creation of a buffer between Deshaulane and the residential uses to the west. Deshaulane, as we all know, becomes busier and busier and becomes a more important bypass for the west part of town, so that traffic load may not be, may not be perfectly compatible with the eight-unit-per-acre designation of the planned neighborhood. Second, we request that the currently proposed planned neighborhood designation remain in the southwest corner to allow for residential uses adjacent to and north of the existing residential uses. And third, we request creation of a working lands designation in the northwest corner to allow for an aggregate processing use to provide resources in support of development of the Y. This used to be a placeholder for future residential use and the long-term development of the area and isn't much of a departure from the current open and resource designation on that piece now. Y is a fast-developing area that enjoys public sewer, easy access to I-90, Highway 93, and the ever-growing residential population along Mullen Road. This request is made with the aim of creating a best fit with the surrounding uses and to facilitate development of the Y to its full potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and may I note that you were at 2 minutes and 59 seconds. That was very impressive. You practiced. Additional comment?
Good evening. My name is Pat Nagy-Swartz, Meadows West landowner. You have written comments regarding the tract of land that in question is Denblecker subdivision, Lot 2, that is designated neighborhood residential density, which is eight-plus acres per unit. The...
I'm sorry, did you begin my reading you're talking about again?
I live in Meadows West, and I'm speaking about the neighborhood designation that's been planned for Denblecker Lot 2, which is within the Meadows West development. If you look on the map, it's just north of Waldo Road. It's right on the corner of Highway 93 and Waldo Road. The Meadows West restricted covenants apply to all of the properties within that Meadows West development, and even though there have been subdivisions late, later in the development, they are all subject to and bound by the Meadows West covenants, restrictive covenants. In 1986, those restrictive covenants were strengthened through a lawsuit that Missoula County Commissioners were successful in having the developers amend the covenants to prevent a continual division of land through family transfer. And even though the Denblecker subdivision and all of the activities and actions that have taken place since do not change the fact that that land is still regulated by the Meadows West covenants, and even though the Newberries, who own Lot 2 of Denblecker subdivision within the Meadows West, even though they have petitioned the city to annex that property, even though they have a contract with the city to bring city services to that site, that does not change the fact, nothing, none of those actions, none of the documents in my big black pack back there, changed the fact that that land is within the Meadows West development and is governed by and regulated by the restrictive covenants. And the map, the proposed map right now, still represents that that property could be a density of neighborhood, and the Meadows West covenants restrict that property and all the properties within Meadows West to single-family housing on not less than two acres. So for that property to remain with the neighborhood designation is a misrepresentation to what can happen with that property. So I know your plan is for 20 years, and within the 20-year period, whether the city or Newberries or whoever might be looking at that piece of property as multifamily housing, that is in conflict with the existing Meadows West covenants. And I ask therefore that you correct the designation to the same designation that all of the rest of Meadows West is designated, other than that one 10-acre tract that is commercial, that it be corrected to rural residential and small agriculture, which is what all of the rest of Meadows West is, and eliminate the misunderstanding that an owner might have for that land, and, for example, if you got your pencil pushers for the city who are trying to figure out who's going to pay for expanding services out that way, and they've got the idea that there's going to be 64-plus residences on that tract of land to help pay for it, that's going to cause them a problem because the Meadows West covenants restrict that property, single-family dwelling on not less than two acres. If you have any questions about anything I've stated, please ask. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional comments?
Thank you for your time. I also live in the Meadows West Division. I am neighbors with Pat Swartz, and I wrote a letter previous, but it did not make the February 10 deadline, but I want to comment about what she is saying. We are new neighbors. We moved in in 2015, and Pat has brought us the history of that area. We moved there potentially for the rural substance of it. And, you know, as we grow out that way, I understand the problems of Missoula, how it's in a mountainous range and how the popularity of the area and the dilemma that Missoula has in stretching it out. So it's important for us to look at those covenants and to keep that as a pristine property, as single homes on two acres. The rest of the Meadows West properties are designated rural residential and small agricultural, which is the appropriate designation and description for this property, not neighborhood residential. This opens up other questions, like how strong is your code enforcement going to be? You know, what about all the off-street parking problems on our private George Kates Road and the traffic coming on and off Waldo Road in the future expansion a half a mile from George Kates for O'Keefe Ranch and Gallatin subdivisions? Just because it is on the backside of a commercial zone of I-93 does not relinquish those covenant rights put forth years ago to be swept under the rug because we need to grow and expand next to our existing infrastructure of the Y. So why change a small 8.65 acre now when it adds so much more to the openness of the visual entry to a well-established rural neighborhood? George Kates is a private road with horses and pasture on one side, and then you're going to have multifamily on this side, and you also have horses and cows going up George Kates. It just makes sense to keep it as is. This property right now has no water and waste sustainability to build multi-units as to date, but from what we've been gathering from Pat, there is a potential and possibility that the owners are providing those, you know, openness to that. You have plenty of land on West Broadway to Mullen Road that will keep the next 20 years pretty busy for the expansion. Conservation of open land is important to Missoula residents, and it's important for the zoning board and the county commissioners to support and honor our covenants for Meadows West. We take pride in our property and our dwelling and actually are helping you, the planning board, provide for that continual open space and farmland. We are paying the constant high rise of property taxes as responsible citizens committed to paying more for the open space of rural land. This open concept will stay that way with the single-family residences maintaining this existence in the future. Build your high-density units on the designated areas, maybe south of Waldo Road, which has been approved, instead of impacting an existing well-established development that will perpetuate and uphold the rightful covenant as rural residential and small agricultural in place to date. Your guiding principles, as stated on page 10, Chapter 2 of your growth policy, states that respect for private property rights should be supported in your policy. Thank you for your attentiveness to this correction of your map.
Thank you, ma'am. What was your name? I'm not sure if I caught that.
Pam Simonic, and I live at 10146 The Lane.
Thank you.
Which is right off of George Kates. Thank you.
Additional comments?
I'm Christopher Fisk, and I'm here to say no to the redesignation of Meadows West.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments?
Hi, I'm Judy Golifin. We've lived out in Meadows West for 36 years, so we've seen it go from six homes to where it is today, and I have a couple really big concerns. Number one is, our Frenchtown School District is bonded to the max. They can't run another bond issue right now. If you figure one child per household and 70 homes go in, that's three teachers and that's a school bus, and we have no money for it. We have no place to go with that. We also have the area, the problem of water. The wells out there are not great. There are some that are really good wells, and in fact, 25 years ago, a well was drilled off of George Kates Boulevard that provides the water for Sunset West. Our well is three to five gallons a minute. That's all it is, and that's, and there are a lot of wells that are like that. So it would greatly impact the area, not to mention all the vehicles coming onto 93. It would have to have a stoplight. We have a lot of accidents off of that right now, and to have that many more vehicles coming onto it. So, and then the other is the fire department. If you put in that many homes, you're going to have to have hydrants. There isn't enough water pressure anywhere. There's no water system anywhere. And right now, we don't have hydrants in our area, and so, and it would also impact, you know, what would the fire department do? Because right now, we're pretty much a volunteer fire department. We have maybe seven full-time staffers and that's it. So, I mean, I'm in, I agree with what everybody else has said. Our covenants say that the homes have to be, two-story has to be at least 800 square foot, a single-story is 1,200 square foot. The setbacks have to be 20 feet. You can't get the homes in there that they're talking about in the amount of land and comply with any of that. So, that's all.
My name is Nancy Lifer, and I live in the Lower Rattlesnake, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the League Women Voters of Missoula, just to say thank you to all of you for this planning process. The League believes that land use planning is a good thing to be doing, and we also believe in a process that allows for a lot of citizen comment, which I, having been at the last hearing and now at this one too, I know you're doing a very good job of doing that and listening, and I know the staff did also. I just wanted to mention that the League is also interested in helping citizens become informed on issues around land use planning, and that we are sponsoring a meeting tomorrow night at the Public Library, starting at 7:00 in the large meeting room, and it's to step back and look at the larger picture of what goes into land use planning and how do the various different concerns interact with each other. We're going to have a panel presentation that will cover housing, open space, transportation, climate change, and infrastructure, all looking 20 years down the road to try to get at the bigger picture of how these things interact and see how, some aware of this all map ideas, what's behind it all? Where does it all come from? So we're inviting any of you who'd like to join us, any of you who'd like to join us, anybody out there in the television world who maybe wasn't paying attention when all this first came up, because I know you've been working on it for a long time. I know a lot of people here have also, but I'm sure there's a lot of folks who haven't been, and so if you have questions about, well, how do all these things fit together? We're hosting a meeting tomorrow night again at 7 o'clock at the Public Library for exactly those kinds of questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Very much appreciated. Additional comments?
Hello, my name is Mayor Seiler. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. So thank you for this opportunity. So one of the things I was hoping to talk about is contracts, okay? And specifically around a covenant. And the question is, is a covenant a contract? When I purchased the home, because I live at 10201 The Lane, before I had purchased it, I was made aware of the covenants. Now, I'd like to ask, is a covenant a contract? How does the city recognize a covenant?
Ma'am, is that a rhetorical question, or would you like an answer?
I'd like to know, yeah. I'd love to understand.
Well, I could probably come up with my own answer, but I don't think I'd speak on behalf of the county attorney's office or the city attorney's office. You'd have to ask them how they respect covenants or if they respect covenants.
So is the question here today that, for some reason, someone has interpreted the covenants as a optional document? Because when you are pulling the information, whether you apply for a loan or you're going to buy a home, in the subdivision, you get a copy of the covenants, okay? Even when you're like refinancing, which I did recently, like a couple of years ago, they want the covenants. The mortgage company wants the covenants to ensure that you're going to adhere to it. Now, to me, if a mortgage company is going to ask a question like that, to me, it would seem that it's kind of contractual, but we'll have to find that out, and so I'd like to put into the minutes that we need to find out if a covenant is contractual. Because I purchased this home under the covenant that it was going to be the single-family, two-acre, and, oh, by the way, that property that we're talking about actually floods. We're talking like if anybody I knew was going to buy that, I would say, I'm not sure if you want to do that because it floods. Okay? But I go back to, is a covenant contractual? When you go and look for this property that we're discussing, as well as all the other properties in the subdivision, my question to each of you is, when you pull up the information for that tract of land, does the covenant come up? And if it does, do you all have a copy of it? Do you have a copy? Have you seen a copy of the covenants? Any of you?
Are these rhetorical questions?
No, these are actual questions.
I'm very confused.
No, they're not rhetorical questions. I purchased this home under a contract that there was a covenant that said this thing was going to be single-family, two-acre, and I wonder what happened to that agreement?
But ma'am, ordinarily, we don't answer questions during the comment period, but I would just like to just take a quick step back and note that, again, I think your questions are probably best posed to the respective legal departments of the county, the county, really. This is not a city question. And I would also maybe suggest you take a look at the parties to the covenants to determine whether the county has anything to do with them at all, but again, I would talk to the county attorney's office on that. I don't think anybody in this board would put themselves out as able to answer any of your questions.
Okay, but I would like to know, have any of you guys seen the covenants for this particular tract of land and for this subdivision? Have you read it?
No.
I was just curious.
No.
No, okay. And is this eventually going to be the committee that makes the decision?
No.
It's another committee?
Is the Board of County Commissioners the elected officials?
Okay, and when will that happen to where?
That's a question that you can ask of the county planning staff. They'll have a much better idea of when that'll be going forward.
Okay, and is that, are there some people here present who could do that?
Yep, those folks right over there are from Community Planning Services, and will have a great sense of the next steps before the people who get elected to make these final decisions.
Okay, and so are we going to find out when that meeting is going to be?
This is Karen Hughes from Missoula County Community and Planning Services. The date of the Board of County Commissioners hearing is dependent on when this hearing is done, and we estimate the time needed to prepare the materials for the Commissioners hearing. So at the earliest, we anticipate it happening in April, but it depends on when this hearing closes and decisions are made.
Okay, and so what happens after this meeting here? Do you provide a recommendation to this other committee?
Let me just suggest, as I mentioned at the outset, because of the time-sensitive nature of this particular hearing, any questions about process, questions about documents that are provided to the governing body, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are best posed to the folks who sort of are running this process. We're here to sort of take comment, take staff's recommendations and staff's work, and come to a recommendation that, as the board does, we just recommend to the governing body. So as far as questions about process, questions about the legal effect of covenants?
Understood, yes. Well, that is a comment, though, is it not, about that I have purchased this property under the condition and understanding of the covenants that was registered with this property? Is that right?
Yeah.
And the covenants say that it's single-family, two-acre? Is that, is that comment appropriate?
Certainly, yeah. I would say whatever comment you'd like to make, but as far as questions about process and the legal effect of those covenants, that is straying more towards questions that we can't really answer.
Oh, sure. I appreciate, you know, that makes sense. Yes.
You're also referring specifically to your own property.
Well, no, to the subdivision, for the subdivision.
Right, but I'm just clarifying, you're asking these questions about the covenants for your own property.
I'm asking, I'm asking these questions for the covenants that govern the subdivision. Yeah, that govern the subdivision, not just my property. My property doesn't have its own covenants.
Okay, ma'am, is there, is there a sort of a concluding comment you'd like to make?
Yes, I would like to, just as I, if I understood right, none of you have seen the covenants that is registered with this particular property yet?
I can only speak for myself, but I have not seen the covenants applicable to your private property. No, I have not.
And if one were to look up the property in question here, would it pull up the covenant that is governed in the subdivision?
Again, based on my own experience, looking at the property information system from Missoula County, no, your private property covenants are not a matter of public record necessarily attached to the, you can go find them in the public record somewhere, but it's not considered cadastral-type data, if that makes sense to you.
Okay, so it sounds like it's probably a good idea to check into it, to see if there's a covenant registered with this property then, right? Because when you're going to apply for mortgage, that you would, they would ask you about it, right?
Okay, I think we're good here.
Very good. All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Randy Rasmussen, and I'm with Meadows West also, and thank you for listening. I do support the comments and the people that have spoken here and what they are saying. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am Paul Bosu, I'm also from Midwest. And then, I also think the same way, because when I was buying a house there, one of the questions, and the first thing they gave us was a covenant, so. And then now to basically allow, what, 70 houses on eight acres? That's gonna be a lot of congestion. If I wanted congestion, I would stay in the rattlesnake. And then where we live right now, we are on the well, it's gonna be very difficult for us to get water if there are 70 houses. And I'm pretty sure those houses are gonna have water. You know, our house on top, we will not be able to get any water. So, and then I also, 100% backing up what you were saying, because if you're gonna make any recommendation, at a minimum, you should read the covenant. If you don't read the covenant, so, basically what you're gonna recommend to. And, I think that's it, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Meredith Webster, and I'm from the Gooden Kyle Development, just east of the Y. And I guess I have the same concerns, our neighborhood is also covenanted, and we're between Butler Creek and Grant Creek, north of the interstate. I see you looking at your maps. So, we're also covenanted, and, you know, I really like land management planning, I'm glad we're doing this, it's great that we're having the update. But there are differences between our covenants and the suggested zoning, and I'm also concerned, I'm hoping that whichever is more restrictive will apply, because on some issues, on some things, we're more restrictive, on some things, the planning will be more restrictive, and would like to have that clarified. And I understand that maybe the county attorney's office can assist with that, but I did want to get it out there, when there's differences between covenants and zoning, it's of concern to those of us who bought into covenants, that we would like to have our covenants honored, so.
Thank you, ma'am, and before the next comment comes up, I'd just like to make two quick observations. First of all, and I'm sure that everybody's sort of mindful of the distinction here, but what we're talking about is not zoning, we're not talking about zoning right now. Now, growth policies and zoning are related, but this is not a map to zone this entire area of Missoula County. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, and if there are questions about the distinction, again, I would direct you to county planning staff, who I'm sure would give you a phenomenal answer about the differences between the two things. The other thing that I want to note, and again, this is a question for the county attorney's office, I think, probably first and foremost, but generally speaking, if there is a government-imposed land use restriction like zoning, even though that's not what we're talking about, and then there are also privately imposed land use restrictions like a covenant, I believe it's the property owner's responsibility to comply with both. To the extent that the covenants are more restrictive than zoning, if it was zoning that we were talking about, then it would be a good idea to comply with the covenants in addition to the zoning. So any conflicts can be resolved just by sort of meshing the two. Again, not talking about zoning, and again, a question best posed to legal authorities for the county, but that's my understanding, having, you know, been involved in this industry for a little while, so, anyway.
Can I ask a question on that, just real quickly? So, if, this is Niva Hassan, so, if something in the covenant was a condition of approval of the subdivision, that they put in the covenant in the homeowners' association as a condition of approval that came from the planning board or from the board?
Can you use the microphone?
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize. I'm asking if something in the covenant was a condition of approval of the subdivision at the time it was created, would that be different than a homeowner's covenant that you willingly engage in when you buy the property? Do you see what I mean?
A covenant imposed by the governing body as a condition of subdivision approval gets included in the same set of, same declaration of covenants and restrictions that gets filed for the subdivision. So, to the extent the developer wishes to impose certain conditions, those get combined with any conditions that would be imposed by the governing body into the final set of covenants and restrictions applicable to lots in the subdivision. So, from the perspective of the lot buyer, there would be no distinction, you would get the set of covenants, and it would just be, well, these are the covenants, and you might not know that some were the idea of the developer versus the idea of the governing body. Okay. Back on track, any further comments?
Evening, my name is Ryan Bagnell, I live on Tukey Track Road, which is part of Meadows West. The question that was imposed there was, as far as the governing body, the covenants were approved by the Meadows West Homeowners Association. I've been there since 96, I was actually part of the homeowners' association, as far as a leadership group. So, yes, the covenants are approved by the Meadows West, but ultimately, the governing body is the county. Ultimately, the county are the ones that enforce the covenants. And I think that kind of went about this backwards, you know, to buy a piece of property, and then come up with a use plan for it after they want to buy the property, I think they would have been better off to buy a piece of property that had the use plan that they wanted. I think if they were to buy a piece of property that was, that was, not to use the word zone, because you don't want to use the word zone, but zone for multifamily units, you know, 70 houses on five or six acres or eight acres, you know, the value of that property would have been a lot greater than the piece of property that they bought, that now they want to change the land use for. Ultimately, I think, you know, there's far better pieces of property in Missoula County for this kind of venture with homes. I don't know if you've ever been in the area of Meadows West, but in my opinion, it's very pristine, it's like a hidden gem, you know, we're 15 minutes from downtown Missoula, but yet, we have that rural agricultural base, people walking their dogs down the street, people riding their horses, it's a great area, and I think that, you know, changing that piece, that one piece of property into a multifamily, 70 homes on acres, doesn't fit at all with the dynamics of the community. And I think there are far better places for this kind of a development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further comment?
One clarification.
Yeah, if you would, just come forward and again state your name, just so that we can keep the record clear. Thank you, ma'am.
Pat Nagy, Schwartzwith Meadows West Properties. I just think there needs to be a clarification regarding the fact that if you are the people that are gonna make the decision now, Andrew Hagamire told me, when I asked him about the misrepresentation of the designation of neighborhood for the piece of property in question, Den Blecker, Lot 2, he told me that you are the ones that can make the change. And if you are the ones that can make the change, I need to understand that you then can take into account the existing covenants that were affirmed by the county commissioners' successful lawsuit against the developers in 1986. And if the county commissioners became a part of those covenants for the purpose of regulating the way that land is used, that that must be a part of how you make your decision. If Andrew can't change the map unless you tell him to, then all of those things that we've talked about must be considered for you to make your decision. Because otherwise, what I'm hearing then is that, as Andrew has proposed this plan, it's going to go to the county commissioners as proposed, if you don't have, if you aren't using the data available to you to make the change. Am I understanding correctly that dismissing, that you would be able to dismiss the existing covenants, there's a court order stipulation for judgment affirming the covenants of Meadows West? Can you dismiss that in favor of the plan as prepared by the committee?
Yeah, sure, Dolly, go for it.
I think this meeting by the League of Women Voters tomorrow night could be beneficial for a lot of people. We are members of the public, volunteers on a board that go through this information and make a recommendation to your county commissioners, if you don't understand how this process works. So we're you, any of you can apply to be up here. So, just want to make that clear. We're a board that makes a recommendation to the county commissioners. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am going to propose a five-minute break, during which I ask some questions of some people in this room. So thank you, guys, and we'll get back to it in just a couple of minutes. Indulging me for has shed some light on this situation. So, I'll make a couple more observations before we continue with comment, and hopefully this sort of assuages some folks' concerns. First of all, the county has engaged in a process here of collecting data and engaging the public to come up with appropriate land use designations for this particular portion of the county. Their designation of certain areas as appropriate for one type of use or another, or one intensity, are made essentially in spite of covenants, because covenants, most of the time, are a private contract between a homeowners' association, lot owners within a subdivision, members of the homeowners' association, and that sort of thing. Most of the time, in my experience as an attorney, the covenants are enforced by the homeowners' association and the members thereof, and lot owners. Now, I understand that this is a bit of a unique situation, because apparently, a 1986 judgment made the county one party that could enforce the covenants for this particular subdivision at their option, they are not bound to enforce the covenants, they just simply have the right to, if they choose in their discretion to do so. We have not been provided with the covenants, because like I said, usually covenants are one thing, and governing, you know, government regulation, county, city regulation is another thing. So, we have a situation here where there's a land use designation, proposed land use designation, based on all the data that the county has collected, that seems to, from what you all are telling us, conflict with the covenants. A, that land use designation doesn't change the ability of the homeowners' association, lot owners, members of the HOA, doesn't alter the ability to enforce those covenants against a lot owner who's violating them. A land use designation is completely separate from any sort of covenant provision that requires somebody to do one thing or another. So, that doesn't take the legal teeth out of the covenants by any means. B, I've also just been informed by the folks from the county that, in light of the comments, in light of everything that you all have said about this issue, it's their proposal that the planning board adopt a change to the land use map, and guys, if I'm butchering this recommendation that you're about to make once comments are done and the public hearing is closed, the recommendation to this board is that we change the map and recommend to the county commissioners that they adopt a changed version of the map, which incorporates the requirements of the covenants for this subdivision. Okay, so I think that what's going to be recommended to us, once the public hearing is closed, is we're gonna hear, we actually think in light of what the public comment that's been received, that you should change the map to conform to the covenants. Okay? And Andrew, let me give you an opportunity now, Andrew, to just...
Yeah, so we sent to the planning board an evaluation of the comments that we've received to date, and in that, in our evaluation, we said, yeah, this probably, this is an easy change to make. And that is, that's available, it's been online for about a week now, on the project website, you could, anyone could have gotten that and looked at that.
Thanks, Andrew. So, again, like I said at the outset, I by no means mean to restrict anyone's right to provide public comment on this. If folks feel like they're concerned with this issue or taken care of, then for the sake of expediency, I would recommend that, you know, we keep the comments on this issue short, or forego them altogether, but that's your choice. So, keep it at three minutes, if people feel like the issue with regard to Meadows West is taken care of, based on these representations and what's been recommended to us by staff, then I would say tailor what you have to say appropriately. Otherwise, the microphone belongs to the public.
So first of all, thank you so much for hearing us, I really appreciate it, I can't express to you how frustrating it is to sometimes share something and then feel like you're not being heard, and so, on behalf of, you know, everyone here and myself, I want to thank you guys for keeping an open mind. I also want to ask a few questions. One is that, are, how are the notes from this meeting here captured? Are we being recorded here as well, or, okay, very good. So will that become made, will that recording be made available for us to access as community citizens? Is that...
I believe that request is probably best made to MCAT.
MCAT?
I think MCAT is the one, Missoula Community Access Television.
All right, but it is recorded, and where is the camera actually, is that the camera over?
There are cameras all around the room.
Oh, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, and so then I also want to just make sure I'm crystal clear on what you had shared, because I was so overjoyed that I'm not sure if I heard it right, but I need to make sure I understood it right, and just so...
So, this is what I'm gonna say to this, okay? This is the public comment period, I'd like, let's get through the public comments, and then you'll hear the board deliberate about all those comments, and it sounds like the recommendation from staff, which we rely on because of their expertise and the amount of effort that they put into these things, their recommendation is going to be that we change the map in accordance with the covenants, or at least to be consistent with the covenants.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna make any more representations about what we're exactly going to do, this is the direction this is headed, and I would say, let's let everybody get their comments in before we start, like, you know, trying to extract precise admissions or representations or guarantees from the board, okay?
Got it, okay. So then, eventually, by the end of today, would you say that we'll have some clarity on that? Is the comment that you just made, that this plan to put the 70 potential units, that is currently then not going to happen? I wanted, just trying to get interpretation. You have to then also vote on it?
Yeah, we've got another four hours left here, so let's hang out, and we will, we will get, we will get more involved with this than you ever wanted us to, I can guarantee. Okay, additional public comment?
Good evening, I'm Phil Carlos, I live in Malum Meadows, which is across Waldo Road from Meadows West. We have a lot of good neighbors over there, and there are a number of us here, I'm representing about five owners in Malum Meadows, and we support our neighbors across the street in their request to observe the covenants, and also, we have concerns about the load on the school district, the fire department, traffic up and down Waldo Road. I appreciate your taking the sidebar there, that was a good move, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Additional comments?
Hello, my name is Kara Markley, I'm also with Meadows West, I'm on George Kates and Equestrian Way, right on the corner, and I'm Pat's neighbor. I'd like to just speak in support of Pat Schwartz and what she had to say today, and also Mr. Bagnell. When I bought the property 10 years ago, it was very obviously an agricultural and horse property community. I very much liked that fact, I carefully reviewed the covenants before I made the decision to purchase the property. I think everybody who's purchasing property in Meadows West should do the same. And thank you for the opportunity to allowing us to speak on this issue, and thank you very much if your recommendation is going to be to change the map to support our covenants.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Renee Rasmussen, and my husband and I live on 106... Hello, my name is Renee Rasmussen, and my husband and I live on 106 through 9 George Kates. And I'd just like to bring to your attention that George Kates Boulevard is a private road. It is not a county road. And this road actually circles our property. There is no outlet to it. It comes around and it circles our property and goes directly back out. And so, my husband and I would be directly impacted by additional foot traffic and automobile traffic. And because it's a private area does not mean that it keeps people out, that it's strictly private because a lot of people, we have a lot of foot traffic in the summertime. And our particular property sees a lot of traffic in the wee hours of the night, nuisance people, and in the summertime, we have, because of the foot traffic, we have animals, we have horses, we have cattle. And so, all areas of our property is exposed to those who come around us. And I would just hope that you would take that into consideration when you think about the planning because it does have a direct impact on us. And one thing that we do deal with a lot is people who do not live in that area speed down that road. And I personally have called the county sheriff's department requesting what can be done about the problem with speeding because there is a lot of disrespect to property owners when it comes to speed, from people who don't live there or are just curious or unaware that it is a private area. And so, I would just hope that that would be something that you all would consider when you discuss this matter, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional comments.
My name's Nathaniel White Man Runzim. We live at 9955 George Kates Boulevard. It's the first house you pull onto coming off of Waldo. And I'm totally against these houses going up. You pull out there, the one reason why we got that piece of property was because it was a rural-type environment. We got cattle ranchers and horses and whatnot, and the last thing I want to see out my front window when I'm having a cup of coffee is all these houses popping up. I think the idea of all these houses pulling water, I'm already having a hard time with water. You throw all these houses up, I'm just going to get even more peed off, you know? So, I'm against it. Thank you.
Sir, what was your last name again?
White Man Runzim.
Okay. Thank you. Additional comments.
Hi, my name is Torrey Ritter, T-O-R-R-E-Y-R-I-T-T-E-R. I'm here representing Montana Fish and Wildlife Parks. Change the subject a little bit, talk about some fish and wildlife values. So, I outlined our recommendation packet we put together at the last meeting. I just wanted to add a few comments about it now, just to kind of help you better understand. First of all, I do want to thank Andrew and Kylie Paul with CAPS for bringing this to our attention, bringing this to attention that we were still able to put together some comments for this map. So we ended up putting together a fairly extensive bit of comments, and I kind of just wanted to talk about what these recommendations are and what they're not. What they are is, we just, they basically, we sat down with them, we talked about it, and they wanted us to sort of, in the words that Andrew put it, throw the kitchen sink at them. So, these recommendations were put together as if we had been handed this Missoula land use map and element, and basically, if we could just do whatever we wanted to accommodate fish and wildlife resources, this is kind of what we would do. These were our recommendations. So, we just want this to sort of act as a guide, not only for the land use map and the element, but also for any sort of future efforts. Just, this is kind of our perception of if Missoula's going to grow into county property, these are ways that we can think about fish and wildlife resources and recreational resources in the area. I just wanted, we'll definitely clarify that this is, the fact that these comments got to be so long and extensive is not a reflection of our dissatisfaction with the land use planning map. So it's not a rebuke of the land use planning map. We're not saying, oh, my God, this thing's terrible for fish and wildlife resources, we better create a 20-some-page document documenting all the things we're seeing wrong. Again, it's just a guide. It's sort of, you know, if we could guide the hand of all of this, of all this development and all of this spreading out of Missoula into county lands, these are the kind of resources and the kind of issues that we would really, really focus on to try to accommodate these fish and wildlife and recreation resources that are, you know, a critical part of what makes Missoula and the Missoula Valley a really special place. This is kind of a meeting point of a lot of different ecosystems and movement corridors at multiple different spatial scales, from these little tiny creeks that are flowing through Missoula to these huge mountain ranges and wilderness areas that connect through this valley. So that's really why these comments are so extensive and why we spent the time to put this together. This is the result of 11 different biologists and managers at FWP sitting in a room together, and it's pretty hard to get 11 people all together for one thing. So, thank you again, and thank you again to the county folks for always engaging with us. They were absolutely wonderful to work with, and we look forward to working with them in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I can guarantee that we won't have specific questions for you at some point later in the evening, so hopefully you'll be here.
Yeah, I'll stick around. And, yeah, contact information for me is on the top page here, and I can link you guys up to any of these other biologists and managers if you have more questions, so.
Okay, thanks. Additional comments.
Hi, my name is Vladimir Shnichala, 10878 Peak Shore Lane. I'm Meadow West homeowners. I will against that subdivision, 70 houses. The reason for it, I live up there for about 20 years. About 20 years ago, they, I had my well, but they put a couple properties away, public supply well. My and my neighbors dry out about months after it. We put, I put another two wells to find water, so that's for you to know.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Rob Arthur. I am also resident of the Meadow West subdivision. So I support all the discussions here tonight about being against this turning into a 70-home subdivision. The only thing I would add is, my concern would be, if this was allowed to happen, it would set a precedence that would travel through all the rest of the properties because if it could be allowed in that one spot, I don't know what would prevent it from being allowed in all the rest of the subdivision. And we all have two-to-three, four-acre places, and I believe this precedence would allow for all those lots to be subdivided as tightly as they could get it done. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments.
My name is Charles Morlock. I'm also a property owner out there in Meadows West and 10750 Peak Shore Lane. I agree with what my neighbors have been saying. I'm against the proposal, and I think we should enforce the covenants as they're written. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments.
Just very quickly, could we just have a show of hands of those that are here from Meadows West and the surrounding area who are in support of changing the designation from neighborhood residential to rural residential and small agriculture?
How about this, is there anybody from Meadows West who doesn't want to change the map? Okay.
Do you know how many people are here from Meadows-
Message received. I think, yeah, I could have assumed as much. Okay, additional comments.
You know, I'll get up and transition the conversation to something else. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. I'm going to hand you an exhibit real quick, just so I can more easily describe the area I'm talking about. And it's not new information, it's just a combination of the exhibits that are in the file already. I'm here to follow up on a conversation that Jason Rice had brought up to the planning board back in January on your first hearing on it, talking about land out by the Bunkhouse Bridge to Blue Mountain Road. What you're looking at on the front here is an exhibit that we've yet to have a discussion on from the planning department, but they've taken the comments that were initially received and made some suggestions to you on what they do. And so when you look at Exhibit 1, that was the, and this is on the front page here, that's what, going into that January planning board hearing, the land use map had recommended for this area. If you look at Exhibit 2, you see an expansion of the commercial area, and that's what we came, that's what I'm here to talk to you about and make comments about, and that's what Jason came to talk to the board about. And then Exhibit 3 on here, all I'm showing is where we've asked for the commercial, and so I've done very crudely outlined the area, and it shows that we very much appreciate the planning department's expansion of the commercial area designation in this area. It's part of the area that, I appreciate that they support it, and they believe commercial's a good use in this area. We would like to ask that you expand that area. On the back, I've got our initial exhibit, and that just shows kind of what's in that area. The area is made up of a mix of uses already. There's commercial uses in there, trans solutions in there, the prime veterinarian clinic is there. It's mixed zoning in there, there's some unzoned properties, there's commercially zoned property, there's agriculturally zoned property, and then there's a large residentially zoned property. The 80 acres on the east, and that's who I represent, their property is zoned residential. It would permit 80 houses there. We think commercial is a lot better use here off the highway than houses. The comp plan is, as I, you're going to get an update, and you're going to see Exhibit 2 is being suggested by the planning department. We'd ask that you even expand that further to where we've proposed it. That's what the landowners in this area would like. That's where the most interest in doing some development is. It hasn't been developed in residential because it's not a really good residential area, you know? But if the comp plan moves to agriculture, there's going to be no compelling reason for anybody to change it. You're not going to change your zoning from the residential, and so we'll see residential out there. We've got limited commercial area going this way. I guess you'd say southwest of town, or, yeah, southwest of town. This will provide an opportunity for the folks in the neighborhood to build some momentum, to work on a plan for how they can utilize the land. You might see users from, existing commercial users from inside the town move out here that need a little more space but don't need the septic and well capacity that you might have on Reserve Street or something. And so it's kind of a natural transition for use out into this area. There already is some commercial out in the area. If we don't put commercial in this area, I think it'll continue to spill further down the bitter root, and so we've even got, you know, we think this is a really good area, there's some really good commercial opportunity here. And so, you know, moving to an ag designation kind of moves us and steps us back. We met with the planning department about a year ago to try to change our zoning from the residential to a commercial, and they said, well, the first step in that is getting your growth policy map updated. And it happens to be that we're updating the growth policy map, and so you don't have to pay the $5,000 fee, you can just see how that process unfolds for you. And so we've waited patiently, and we're here today with some intent because we didn't submit an application because it didn't make any sense to change the growth policy. We're here to kind of act as this is our application, this is our opportunity to see commercial be utilized here. The main difference, one of the main differences between our recommended area of commercial and what the planning department's put in Exhibit 2 is mainly that they've followed the 500-year floodplain as their boundary, and I've followed the property boundaries of the landowners in here. It's pretty common to have, it's difficult when you have a property that's in the middle of its parcel, it goes from ag to commercial. That would create a complication in the entitlement process that would, it would just be a challenge that we have to overcome. Even if we, if you make the recommendation to follow our boundary of where the commercial should go, it doesn't mean that we don't have to adhere to all the floodplain requirements and regulations. It just simplifies the entitlement process, and it makes it a lot easier to have the conversation on what you can do. You still can't put, you still have limitations on what you can put and where. That's, the floodplain dictates that, and so that, I'd love to, and it's a complicated thing, but I'd love for you guys to support our request, and if you have questions, I'd love to answer them. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Paul. Additional comments.
I'm representing potential buyers of the 80 acres on the east side there, and so I'm not speaking for them, or I'm not speaking for the current property owners, but they're working together. They, I've worked for both the current property owners and somebody who wants to buy it and develop it. So, no, I'm speaking on behalf of Territorial Land Works for those clients. So, thanks, thanks, Phil.
Additional public comment on this item. Before this board, this is the only time to make comments, but as we were mentioning before, this then goes to the governing body who makes the ultimate decision. There'll be plenty, whether it goes to one public hearing or multiple, I'm not totally sure, but there'll be other opportunities in addition to being able to provide comment to planning staff before it goes to the governing body for adoption. If you had come forward and sit, yeah, and just speak into the microphone and maybe identify yourself just again for the record.
Yes, yeah, Mayor Seiler at the lane 10201. So I think it was Fish and Wildlife came up, and is this the study you're talking about that you guys put, like a study about, like if you had a, you know, if you had options, what would you recommend? Got it, okay. And the reason I'm asking is because in the analysis, did you guys check to see what some of the flooding history has been in this particular area? I had mentioned earlier, it floods. I feel really bad for the people who have purchased this property, but it floods. There's standing water in the springtime, and I was just curious in the analysis if you included that kind of work or not.
Well, okay, just a couple of points of order here. First of all, you have to consider that Fish, Wildlife and Parks looked at the entire planning area here, whether or not they went granular on this particular piece of property that everyone's sort of focused in on. I'm not sure. Fish, Wildlife and Parks provided written public comment as any other member of the public, so I think if you have questions about the analysis that FWP did, I would just have a private conversation with Mr. Ritter and ask him of methodology, but I wouldn't say the record is an appropriate place to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that. All right.
Additional public comment. Going once. Yes, ma'am. That always gets people up, doesn't it? Going once, oh, no! You didn't wait till twice or three times, so that's-
My name is Anne Repcalvis. I do not live in this area, but I live in Target Range, and we get, we have the feeling of perhaps being squeezed as well. So, I just want to say that I am stunned and very pleased and impressed that you all have come to the conclusion that what these people think is best for their land is perhaps what you will recommend to the commissioners. So just thank you for that light.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional- Additional public comment. Okay, seeing none. Going to close the public hearing. Ah, ah, you got me! You got me! It's like, oh no! Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at this time, and I think what we'll do is maybe take another quick break here, let everybody stretch, and then we'll, I think, probably give staff a chance to make any comments they wish to make, address anything if they wish to avail themselves of that opportunity, other not, otherwise we will start in on board discussion. So we'll come back in a few minutes here. Thanks. Of course, the public hearing has been closed, so we're going to open it up to planning board discussion and comments. I've taken a quick poll of board members to sort of come up with a strategy for attacking this, because there's a lot of public comment, a lot of recommended changes from staff based on public comment. And so I think what we're going to do is this, we're going to, working off a document titled "Summary of Public Comment and Staff Evaluation, dated the 13th of this month." We'll work off that document, and what we're going to do as a board is pull out any comments or issues that are memorialized in this document that we want to address specifically, go through those issues, and have a discussion on them. But I think that board members are generally in agreement that we find staff's analysis of the various public comments and recommended changes based on those comments to be appropriate. So we'll have, maybe make a record on that a little bit more as time goes on. But I guess I would open it up to planning board members to start by pulling anything out of that summary of public comment and staff evaluation that we want to talk about specifically. From there, if there's anything that is not touched on in here that we want to talk about and call attention to and maybe consider changing, let's go there, and then hopefully what we'll end up with at the end is a series of motions that touch on the specific issues we're interested in, maybe a motion that touches on sort of a batch approval or denial of, you know, sort of a whole host of recommended changes from staff, and then some motions about the map in general and the land use element. So, start with Neva.
Can be complicated a little?
Yes, it can.
Because I realize we also have this packet, John, from the staff that has all these cute little tabs on it, "Public comment without staff evaluation," so we'll consider those separately?
Sure.
I guess, because I, including some of my own and Helen's, we were latecomers. But I would like to ask that we pull out items number 27 and 29 for additional conversation from the large table. Mainly, I just want some clarification on 29, but some discussion on 27.
Okay. Should we go around at this point, and if people have those numbers handy, then great. If not, we can start with 27 and 29, and then maybe from there, if people are finding items in that chart that we want to pull out. But if anybody has anybody to add to the list at this point, I can kind of take them down.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If I have a kind of a broader question about the whole map process, should we save that for the end?
Oh, I wouldn't say so. I mean, it's a, it sounds like maybe that'd be a good question to ask at the outset, perhaps, and just sort of get a good...
Then I would like to. One of my concerns, and I think this has been addressed, and I don't remember the answer to it, is that we need to read this map from the 40,000-foot level. So we have 64 land use designations that Andrew and staff has created. Does this sort of coarseness of heterogeneity, so as we look at it from that height, okay, what we're not, or pixelation of the map, is it fine enough at some of the important boundaries, like rivers and roads, for us to recommend something significant? Does that make sense? Are we too far away from it when what we're being asked, what the important thing the community is asking us is, I don't want to know that you're going to take this piece of property that's 15 square acres, and, you know, what I want you to do is look at whether part of this should be agriculture, part of this is residential, but we've kind of made a big lump out of it. Is it, are we looking at it at the right level?
Peter, I have a maybe response. Yeah, I mean, I've been struggling since the last meeting, or since preparing for the last meeting, with trying to evaluate requests for changes. There are a lot of goals in the plan that are, you know, written there, established for the community, but there's a real disconnect, I think, between the goals and the plan and the map. And when we're presented with questions from people about whether one particular parcel should be designated one way or the other, I'm sort of at a loss. I don't really feel like in the plan there's data to show or to justify what was depicted in the map versus what a particular property owner wants, with the exception of some good arguments for the area off of, where people are talking about tonight. So I feel like that's a problem. I mean, maybe it's solvable, but like, I look at other planning documents that have come out of the city and county recently, in recent years, and like the UFTA document from 2008, and I think they do a really good job of documenting exactly the data behind why growth should or should not go in certain areas, and I don't really see that here. It's, it makes it challenging to give recommendations on people who have differing opinions on the land map. And besides which, maybe bigger picture, maybe this might be closer to what you're getting at, Peter. I mean, another thing that's making this challenging for me is that there's, in the plan, it doesn't really give me a sense of where we're going. You know, I don't see forecasts about, you know, for example, how many people do we expect to live in the Y area as a result of the changes in land use designations. That's something that a lot of planning projects, like the recent MPO transportation plan, have done as well. They depict different scenarios to say, hey, if we go in this direction, this is the type of traffic congestion and population areas that we'll see. If we move in this other direction, we'll get that. I don't see that here, so again, it kind of makes that tough to evaluate the plan in general or suggestions for changes. I think I'll leave it at that. I mean, one of the other big things too, and it came up tonight, when I look at this map, what I think is missing from here, and would be helpful in making decisions, is I don't see on the map or anywhere in the plan, we're not highlighting where the land use designations that are proposed differ slightly or significantly from what's already there. And I think that's a big question that a lot of people have, and it looks like in some cases, maybe there's big disconnects there that would be important for people to know. So I don't know if this was at all similar to your feelings, Peter, but your thoughts resonated with me. I've been having similar, maybe, challenges, kind of wrapping my head around the project and the recommendation that we're being asked to give.
Should we, at this point, give staff an opportunity to address those comments, I think, if you all would like to?
Yeah, I, maybe, is there additional, I mean, I'm still kind of formulating my thoughts on this right now, so is there still sort of a, you know, if there's still additional discussion, that might give me a few more minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, you know, a thought that occurred to me as you were, you were making your comments, Vince, and I agree with you, it is, this seems like a big task, because, you're right, I mean, this is a large area, and there, there's got to be a boundary between these different land uses, and you would expect there to be trouble at the margins, right? Like, you would expect there to be disagreement with what's been proposed at the places where there's a transition, maybe? That doesn't totally surprise me that that's where we're seeing, like, the comments, like, hey, you should expand this just a little bit, or you shouldn't, or something like that. It's kind of, that makes sense to me, and I guess that's just kind of an observation. And I think, I mean, the scale is, the scale is kind of, it's kind of tough. I mean, it's, it's, this is, it's a broad scale, and I think that's just what you're going to get with a countywide, with a map that's designed to effectuate a countywide I mean, it's just interesting to hear you guys say that, because the scale, it hadn't really occurred to me that, that, you know, maybe it's not the right scale, that we needed to look at it in some sort of closer way.
I don't know.
Yeah, if we even do, yeah, yeah.
Because maybe the question, you know, asking from a bigger scale helps us address the issues of land use better than if we focus on minutia.
And part of what makes it challenging is that we are being asked to look at very particular parcels and change this one and that way, so like, how do we do, look at both at once?
I think, I mean, you know, it seemed to me since the very beginning of this process that one of the goals was to decrease the amount of minutia, that, you know, however many, is it 64 land use designations previously, and now we're down to 16? And that was purposeful, to try and sort of unclutter, declutter what was a very, a really kind of busy map. It didn't need to be so busy. I mean, zoning, zoning should be busy. Zoning is granular, and occurs, I think, at a finer scale than this. And so I think here, we're just, this is just, this is a picture of, you know, sort of, generally speaking, where are these different types of uses going to exist in this greater Missoula urban area? And in that sense, I think the scale makes a lot of sense to me, you know what I mean? You see these sort of like red splotches, yeah, we're not down to, to, like, it is based on parcel boundaries, in all likelihood, in a lot of places and everything like that, and, you know, so you see these kind of bigger color patches, not necessarily meant to, you know, fix anybody's rights as much as they are just sort of to say, like, this area is where we're going to do this, and this area is we're going to do, is where we're going to do this. And then zoning comes along and says, well, yeah, this area, but not necessarily right here or right here. It, you know, it's, zoning's the, zoning's the fine tune sort of knob, and here we're sort of, you know, this is like macro adjustment. I don't know, you know, that's just the way I understand it. I don't know if, you know...
John, I think that's a good, the good question is, does everyone on the board understand what this map is for? What its purpose is? I mean, it's to generally guide where land uses are going to go in the future. Zoning's the detailed part in that, in that respect. It's, you know, we use it for, it's a policy foundation for our zoning regulations. I've mentioned that many times in my presentations too. So that, the map is one component, but the, you know, it's hard to overlook that, it's easy to overlook, but you have to remember that the land use designations themselves are probably more important in that respect. Well, the land use map is important, it's everyone focuses on the map, right? But don't forget how important those land use designations are, yeah. Because that will guide, that's the policy foundation for the text of our zoning regulations, which we're about to update. It generally guides where we want to work on extending infrastructure over the long term, so, you know, our water, our sewer, our roads, transportation systems, et cetera. And it also identifies locations that where we need to focus on coordination with the city of Missoula and how we operate with them. This is, this is a general plan, and the people would refer it to growth policy, it's an amendment to our growth policy, but other places in the country would refer to it as a general plan or a comprehensive plan. They're supposed to be sort of at a 40,000-foot level, and there are many different ways, many different strategies to developing these types of planning documents, these comprehensive planning documents. We elected to do it not, maybe like the city, we elected to focus on values. So we see this as a value-based plan. So you don't see a lot of data in it, because it's more about what people in this community care about. You know, there are, we have a lot of other planning documents available to us, like our transportation plan, which is more of a database plan. Those things have a relationship together. This plan informs our transportation plan, when they'll start to update that in a couple of years, they'll look at this land use designation map to help formulate their models, to see how traffic patterns are going to change. And then we'll go ahead, you know, in five years, we'll go back and we'll look at what the transportation plan says, and we'll reevaluate whether this map should change at that point. And it's supposed to evolve over time. We made a mistake in Missoula County by sort of holding on to it for 40 years without really comprehensively looking at things, and that isn't, you know, our intent going forward. So, you know, that, those, if you, you know, you read the land use element, it focuses heavily on those values and those ideas that the people of Missoula had through this outreach process, on what they want our community to look like in the future, and that's sort of the crux and the focus of the plan.
I think, you know, outreach process is the two critical words with regard to this plan. I really appreciate you making the distinction between a plan that's maybe more data-driven or numbers-driven versus this type of data, which is a qualitative plan as opposed to a quantitative plan, in essence, is kind of...
Yeah, this one, you know, planning isn't always science, sometimes it's art.
Right.
This is a little bit more on the art side.
Right.
I mean, there were plenty of factors that went into developing the plan, I can't even probably name them all, but, you know, we looked at existing land use patterns, we looked at the floodplains, we looked at conservation easements, we looked at soils, we looked at slopes, we, I mean, we looked at a lot of things, but you don't necessarily see that analysis within the plan. You know, part of that was the planning area profile that we did earlier, that was sort of the, an existing conditions analysis. We wanted this plan. If you look at what, what sort of the trends are in many of these general plans and comprehensive plans that communities are doing, they are trying to make them shorter, they are trying to make them more focused and more vision-driven on, you know, these big comprehensive plans, so they're easier to, for the public to digest. And so unlike our growth policy, which is, you know, 100-plus pages, or the city's growth policy, which is hundreds of pages, we tried to keep this thing as succinct and short as possible to highlight those values and highlight that vision, that big idea that we have for, that the community has for Missoula, which is that one community approach and the roles that Missoula County has in making sure that we have this great place to live, this community to live in.
Jamie?
This discussion about viewing things from 40,000 feet reminds me of the question, Andrew, that I asked you a while back. And the question was, but my concern is, is that we're in a planning process that will properly accommodate the needs of the growth of this community over a fixed period of time. We haven't adopted growth estimation, and this is, do we have enough land zoned at densities sufficient to supply the needs of, say, for instance, the half of the Missoula urban area who rent? The density required of multifamily housing development is around 35 units an acre. That's really quite high, but that's, that's the amount of units a developer needs in order to be able to have a project pencil out. So the question I posed was, are you analyzing the areas that particularly concerning multifamily, is there going to be enough of that over the projected growth estimate? And this necessitates looking at, of course, at the city and the county as well. And is that going to be published? Or is it going to be in this plan? You know, when we think about the folks who objected tonight to, you know, all of a sudden having 70 or 80 homes on an eight-acre parcel, and you say, well, you know, and I am sympathetic to them, I think... know, and I am sympathetic to them. I think the, the plan ought to reflect existing covenant, covenants. But if we take away 80 units there, do we need to find them someplace else because we can barely make, provide enough housing over the course of the growth in a fixed term and, and the future? Is that, you said that you were working with city staff and, and doing, performing that analysis. Is that going to be in this document?
It's not in there, but we could, we could include some numbers on housing. We do have population projections within the document. And we expect to grow by, the planning area, the way it is today, with the jurisdictional boundaries that are drawn, the way they are today, we expect the population in this area to grow by about 14,000 people over the next 20 years.
So that doesn't include an analysis of the cities?
Well, it, it, so that, what that does is, it, so I need, then we need to take a step back. So the city, we need to look at the population projection that both the city and the county have in their growth policies. We use the same population projection. It's a countywide population projection. And then we have to make some sort of decision on how much of that proportional, proportionally is going to happen in the city and how, how much of that is going to proportionally happen in the county. The only way that we can really do it objectively at this point is to look at past development patterns. So it, in the past, roughly, so what I did was, I think the easiest way is just to explain the way I, I look and how, how I did this. So what I did was I took all of the census, what is it, the census blocks, which are the smallest tracks that the census actually keeps numbers on. So the smallest geographic areas where the census keep numbers on. And I took all the census blocks from the year 2000 in this planning area. And then in 2010, so I, I had, I had an ability to look at the population change over that decade. And to get an idea of how much of the entire county, which includes the city's population growth, was going to occur within this boundary. And it, that, between that and then looking at how the city annexed over the last 10 years, or that 10-year period too. So what I did was I took a census block. I looked at the population. I looked at the city's annexation layer for that decade. If they annexed it and the population changed, then I could get an idea of where the city was growing. So I could, what I did was I found that between 2000 and 2010, roughly 50% of the city's growth was actually happening in areas that were in the county and they're being annexed. So based off all this analysis, we got to about 14,000 people within the planning area in the next 20 years. Now, the planning area's boundaries is kind of continually evolved as the city expands. So based off of those past development patterns, roughly, roughly 45 to 50% of that growth that we think is 14,000, that's going to happen in the planning area, will happen on the edges and be annexed into the city. So the actual population growth, if you just looked at census numbers, would end up showing in the next 20 years that we've only grown by 7,000 people. When we, the reality is, we have to plan for that city growing outward as well. And so that's why we, we look at the whole thing and not just the city. So there's, we, we have evaluated some of that as well. In terms of, it's a little complicated, I'm sorry, but in terms of housing units, we, we looked at the land use designations and we did a pretty in-depth analysis of, you know, taking out any sort of, any sort of constraint to development without a parcel. So we looked at things that we knew were regulatory constraints, like steep slopes over 25%, conservation easements, flood plains, wetlands. And we removed those from the analysis, those acreages from the analysis. And then we looked at the land use designations and, and we created a range, because most of the land use designations in terms of residential development allow for a range of development. They're not just a, they're not super hyper-specific and just say, you can have six units per acre in this land use designation. It says three to 11 units per acre. So we picked a range from the low end to the high end for each land use designation. And then we took out roughly 40% of the acreage of each land use designation for, for potential for infrastructure and parks and things like that, because usually a subdivision is roughly 40% gets excluded. And then we looked at, then we only, we identified parcels, the low-hanging fruit, the parcels, excuse me, that weren't developed. So we, we took this, the tax layer and eliminated parcels that had structures on them throughout the planning area. And so that identified what we would consider these development-ready parcels, which is kind of a, you know, funny term, but assuming that they're non-developed. And what we found within the land use designation is that there's the potential, we need 6,000 housing units in this area, roughly 300 per year for the next 20 years, to accommodate our population growth. That would, you know, recognizing roughly 150 of those every year would be probably built in the city, somewhere on the edges and not within the county. Within this land use design, within this land use map, we, yeah.
So the 6,000 housing, is that to accommodate the 14,000?
Yes, correct. It's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, based off of our.
So they would all, none of that would be in the city? That's the 14,000 outside of the city that would be annexed in?
Yeah, Dudley's right. It's a combination. So roughly 50% of that would end up in the city.
Oh, because it would be in the city.
Yeah. It, it's something we're planning for now, because it's going to be on the edges. It's in the county today, but when it's built, it will be annexed. And so it's not going to end up in the county. It's not going to count for our numbers. It's going to count for their numbers. What we found was there's a potential to build between 21,000 and 44,000 housing units within this planning area here, with this land use map the way it is. So there's planning.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. The, the problem is, what we did was we also looked at where our infrastructure is today. And what we found is based off of our important infrastructure, the infrastructure you have to have to, for, for the type of development you're talking about, multifamily, higher-density resident, single-family residential. You need water, you need sewer, and you need roads. You have to have those three. So where we have those three things in place today, we only have room for roughly 34 to 8,500 of those housing units. So there's, you could look at it as maybe this is being kind of speculative in a way in the land use map. But what we've said is, what it shows is that we've been neglecting our infrastructure over time. And that's why the plan so heavily focuses on the implementation strategy of trying to get infrastructure out in some additional places, because chances are, we won't be able to accommodate our growth if we don't work on our infrastructure. So we want to use infrastructure as a tool to guide where growth goes, rather than just react to where growth has been occurring, which has been the MO in Missoula County for quite some time. So we want to be proactive. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's sort of a mixed bag. Like, yes, there is plenty of land area, but if we don't implement the plan, if we don't update our zoning regulations, if we don't zone places properly, if we don't extend infrastructure, we're going to be in a little bit of a bind. And if we're in a little bit of a bind, that doesn't stop people from coming here. The 14,000 people are still going to come. What's that going to do? It's going to push them further out into those areas where they're going to be able to develop on a well and septic. And so those are probably in the places where we least want the development to be occurring because they're going to be, it's going to be farther out from our city center. It's going to probably be in our, our areas with wildlife values and our agricultural habitats, those values that we identified in the plan. If we develop that single-family, one-acre, well-septic pattern, we're going to lose a lot of the things that are important to us.
So is it possible to, that, I mean, of course it's possible, right? This is all just sort of like a best guess, but it's, is also possible that as a result of a, like a lack of infrastructure in the county, that that could force a higher percentage of the 14,000 people coming here and the 6,000 necessary units to be in county land that's subsequently annexed? Like, that percentage, instead of being 50, approximately 50%, could bump up to 70 if developers who seek to develop in the county in areas that aren't necessarily directly adjacent to the city will find that to be impossible and so will.
It's possible with, with the changes in, in, in the exempt well rule at the state level, where water rights will be harder to get. And so you'll have to go to the city to get water rights, where before in the past, that hasn't been necessarily the case. It's been easier to get water rates. It's, so it's possible that could happen, that it could force more towards the city. It also, we still have exempt wells. You can still go out and pop a straw in the ground every one acre. So I, I think looking, you know, the city has adopted inward focus policy. They haven't adopted an annexation plan. There's still a lot of question marks about how the city is going to go forward with growth, how much they're really going to be able to accommodate growth and development without making some big changes to where they, they do, they go about their business. So the biggest, I think the biggest benefit is the city really starts to embrace inward focus and really starts to make changes. That would drive that 14,000 down smaller and drive it into the city. But if we don't make changes and we don't use infrastructure, I think, based off of the past 10 years, because not much has changed, from this 10, from our future 10 years to our past 10 years, except for maybe the exempt well rule has changed a little bit, we're, we're probably going to drive more growth out into our ex-urban areas.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad Andrew brought this up, because I remember when he first came, talking about the mapping, and he's talking about values. And, and, you know, it's just, what's important? Open space, open space. So superficial. Great. We all want it. We all want those values. But it's brought to mind, this human infrastructure is so important. And I'll add the energy grid and solid waste disposal to those, to those other main infrastructures you need. We, if nothing else, this map has stimulated a little deeper thought, you know, about what we're going to do with this population growth. So, I mean, I, I think, you know, you mix those two things pretty well. And I'm glad you explained how you were thinking about how we're going to deal with this population growth. And, and the infrastructure is so important. So, thanks.
Can I just ask a quick clarification? I just want to be sure I understood you. Because my concern has been that the focus inward policy of the city, which I fully embraced, you know, my concern has been what's happened in the county, you know, hasn't really facilitated that inward focus. Until now, we have the possibility of doing that. So what I understand you to be saying, I just want to be clear, is that if we were to implement something along the lines of what you've proposed and, and through the process, that the only way we really ensure that it ultimately continues to, to emphasize the focus inward is by ensuring that we do the proper infrastructure improvements to really facilitate the development into the areas that are most desirable? Is that what you're saying? I just want to be sure.
Okay, so, I guess what I'm saying is, this map is wall art and is meaningless in and of itself without implementation. It's just a policy. And so that implementation strategy, updating our zoning regs, which we're starting right now, to, so our zoning regs match the values of our community, right? Fixing, making some tweaks to our subdivision regulations, zoning, implementing the land use map through zoning. So that in both means zoning unzoned areas and, and proactively rezoning some of the areas within the land use map that are already zoned, that maybe aren't zoned appropriately. So doing those code updates, being proactive about infrastructure, so planning and financing and building infrastructure and managing infrastructure, and then coordination with our partner in this community, which is the city of Missoula. We have to do all of those things together in concert. Otherwise, I, yeah, like, we're not going to, if this is our vision, we're not going to achieve it.
Could I follow up on that? I mean, I think I share a similar sentiment, Neva, and the way I was thinking of it, I mean, it seems like the city's focus inward policy was trying to turn the needle, you know, try and direct growth in a way that was different from what we'd seen in the past 10 or 15 years, so that it's closer inward towards the city. We can preserve open space and reduce people's travel throughout the city. My concern is, it seems like this, and I, I really appreciate the explanation you gave, Andrew. It sounds like, and maybe I have this wrong, but we looked at population growth in the last 10 or 15 years and the distribution between city and county, and then we're just continuing that straight, I mean, this basis of this plan is continuing growth exactly how it happened in the last 15 years. Is that, I mean, is that true or not? And do you think, is that at odds at all with the city's growth policy?
It's not, you're not incredibly wrong. It, Vince, it's, it, no, we, we basically looked at the past to, to identify our population projections going forward. That doesn't, that's not a, that doesn't say anything about the land use patterns. That just says about the amount of growth that we see going forward. And a large reason because that is, is it's, we don't have any, any data in any changes. So the city's adopted a growth policy, which talks about inward focus as a strategy or a concept or all these different things.
Value.
Right. And then they have to do something. And so we, you know, we don't have an annexation plan from the city yet. So, you know, they, they're, they, they have to, they have to make changes to execute. Like, so they, they've got a big giant ship, and they're trying to change course. And it's only going to happen, you know, a little bit at a time, and it's going to take time to change, you know, and change the plan, the development paradigm of a community quickly. It takes time. And so they've got a lot of work to do to execute the inward focus thing. It has to be implemented. It's also just wall art if they don't do something about it. And so, you know, they, they've done some really obvious things, like, that have been fantastic, like the purchase of mountain water will give them a huge amount of control on how they grow. So that's big-time implementation of the inward focus strategy. But they don't have an annexation policy yet. And that's a basic planning tool for cities. The second-largest city in Missoula, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to reel on the city of Missoula. They're doing a good job in a lot of things, but that's a basic planning tool that they don't have in place to manage how they're growing out. So they, they've got a lot of work to do. And so that's why we focused our population projections off of what we could objectively identify, and that was the past development trends. Now, we'll have another census that comes out in 2020. That will shed some light on whether or not Missoula, the city of Missoula is actually making headway in the inward focus thing, and they're actually changing the pattern of growth. And then if they are, well, you know what? The best thing is, we just don't grow as fast in the county. I mean, win-win, right? So, and we can make changes to the land use map if we need to. You know, we, every five years, we'll be updating things and making changes.
Did you get comments from city transportation, the MPO, or the housing development?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, they've, they've been fantastic partners. They've been with us since day one, working on this very closely. We meet with them very frequently on this map. Yeah, we didn't, they have not submitted formal comments because they're.
They have not?
No, they've just been part of the team, essentially, yeah.
Because that's one of my other bigger concern, other bigger concerns is the cost of, basically the implications of having new development in some of these places, like out in the Y and off of West Mullen Road. You know, we heard from people tonight about school districts that are already full, fire departments that are understaffed and stretched, roads that have lots of traffic now and might need traffic lights, have new development builds out. I know, you know, I work in transportation, and when the MPO did their transportation plan, they took planning documents like this and tried to forecast from this exactly how many people would live in a particular area and how many trips would come from that area into town. They built a transportation model to forecast traffic levels throughout the community to determine where we need to expand roads and put in traffic signals. We do this on a 30-to-50-year time horizon. And right now, there's no projects, infrastructure projects planned in that 30 years for these areas. And so it seems like the first step. I mean, it seems like a really, a really important step for setting up our community for the challenges that we're going to be facing in, in the coming years, if it does build out the way it does. And so I think not having a clear understanding of the cost of the transportation infrastructure in particular, of the, these development patterns, I think it's, I, I just have a hard time making a recommendation without having an understanding of those things.
That's the purpose of the transportation plan, Vince. That's what the transportation plan does. It looks at those things. It's a, that's a, that's a specific plan that looks at a specific, a specific part of our community and develops costs based off of projects and modeling. This is, this is a, these general plans, you don't, there's far too many inputs and far too many things to consider. It's not standard practice to look, to look at cost within these things. That's, that's why we have these other issue-specific plans, like a, like a, like an infrastructure plan or, you know, the bus line plan. Those things break down a specific resource and look at the specific cost of it. That's not done in these types of planning documents.
Say, I mean, if you talk, the city in particular doesn't seem to have enough money every year to fix the roads that we have. We don't have enough money, the county as well, to put up matching funds to build the capital projects to fix the problems. capital projects to fix the problems we have now. So if we just continue doing the things the, the way we're doing them, I don't see that changing. And so I guess that's why I'm pushing back on this, I know this is the standard process of doing things, but I think if we make these decisions, I think as a community, as a nation, we have to do a better job about thinking about the implications of growth decisions, because we're dealing with the consequences now and I think it's just going to get, continue to get more challenging if we don't put, put the work in before we make decisions like this.
So, one of the things that I think is interesting and compelling about what is proposed here, as I understand it, is that it would kind of move or try to concentrate the new development along the interstate, essentially. So, it's an existing road, it sure looks better than the road outside my house right now, which is hard to drive on. But, you know, so I guess I'm wondering, Vince and others, what your perspective is on the interstate as a way to focus this growth around? Because on the one hand, I really like it, the hazard is, hazard maps show that things like the wildland urban interface are not along the interstate and those kinds of things, although of course the interstate and the railroads provide, create their own set of hazards, as the train wreck today illustrated, right, carrying a pickup at half a mile. Scary. So I guess, I do think that the transportation piece is really important here because I really appreciate that this map tries to use the existing transportation infrastructure, which we may be able to make even better if we were to be able to figure out money. So I guess I'm curious what your, your thoughts are and anyone's thoughts are on that transportation piece, as well as the hazards associated with it, because I moved here a year or two after the Alberton chlorine spill, which was really extremely serious. And so I don't want to make light of these infrastructures, but I also appreciate that they're already there. So how do we think about that?
Yeah, I mean, I have two comments, Niva, one is, uh, it comes down to the scale. I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around what's proposed in Y and I didn't do any actual measurements, but the area that proposed in Y, the combination of planned neighborhood, commercial, residential and industrial, it's about the size of central Missoula. And so, I mean, if this is a community of 20,000 people, I think that's a little different than you were thinking of, you know, who knows, there's no numbers associated here to help understand the implications. The second point in response, Niva, is that the MPO's regional transportation plan that they completed two years ago was really ambitious. It encompassed an area that's larger than the planning area, it was months, months and months of public input, and they ultimately decided to set a community-wide goal to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips by 20 or 30%. And they looked at different scenarios, you know, if we continue the way we're going, if we kind of shift the needle a little bit, if we really go for a plan that would, would help fulfill the community's goals for, for public health, for air quality, economic equality. And so that's a big change. And so when I think about another plan from a accompanying community agency, looking at, you know, placing, and again, I don't know how, what the scale is in these places, but lots of people living in an area who really wouldn't have easy access to transportation options, makes it challenging. It seems like it's at odds to me, you know, and that's what's frustrating to me, the two big planning processes it would be. It sounds interesting, I'd love to hear comments from the city about. It's far, it's far, it's further than where anyone, anyone lives right now. It is, especially with bus service, you know, we, I get a different perspective on this working at the bus agency, because we have to, our checkbook has to balance every year, and so we can't provide service to an area unless we have the funding to do it. And so when areas are added to our service district that actually don't pay for themselves, you know, the streets are too curvy or the, it's too far of a distance from central Missoula on a cost per mile basis to be competitive with other areas. And what we find is that we provide, the cost, the rides that we give to people in the outlying neighborhoods in Target Range and Miller Creek, they cost multiple times per mile than rides in the center city. It's way more expensive for us to provide the same service to outlying areas. And so. Yeah, but that means that everyone else is subsidizing higher cost services in outlying areas, the same for water and sewer, you know, it costs money to pump water up hills. I speak as a city writer, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, over the 20 years, things evolve. So from the transportation's perspective, there were a few things we, we considered, I don't, you know, everything Vince is saying is, is, is right, you know, there, you know, development, um, there are certain levels of development you need to be able to accommodate transportation, especially with like bus service or, especially the transit, you need a certain, you know, mix, higher densities, mix of uses are far more effective. What Aaron Wilson told me is like, sort of a ballpark, you know, you want to get to a 12, 15 units per acre for, for transit service to really be effective. So there were a couple of things we, we did focus on, I mean, it wasn't, the transportation piece wasn't necessarily why we focused growth along that corridor to the northwest. I mean, it was certainly part of it, it had to do a lot with, a lot with some of the other values that we have, like our rivers and our, our agricultural soils and wildlife habitat as well. It was also, the growth out the Y was also supported by pretty much all the stakeholders that we, we, you know, we discussed, it was pretty widely supported, so. But from a transportation perspective, you know, the first thing what we tried to do is we tried to accommodate more of our growth through higher densities than what Missoula County is currently doing. So higher densities, you know, that's why we see a lot of, the land use designations have eight units per acre or greater, so we're not, we're trying to encourage more multifamily. We've, in our land use designations, we've incorporated the ability to do more mixed use. So we, even in our residential land use designations, we talk about small-scale commercial, it should be incorporated, the scale of the neighborhood, it should be done hopefully by right within the zoning once it's zoned, so some of these, we don't have to go through, you know, like a rattlesnake gardens type fight for every single commercial development we, we want to do. So a little bit mixing of uses. And then we've also started to incorporate some discussion on access and mobility in our land use designations, which is a step forward for Missoula County and for the city of Missoula, both, both of our jurisdictions haven't made that connection yet between our land use designations, what our, what our, what our built environment looks like and then our transportation system around it looks like. So that's a really important piece to do. We, we're just at the tip of ice, the iceberg of what can be done, but we've set up that framework to expand that conservation a lot more, conversation a lot more in the future on access and mobility. So the idea is that, you know, the land use designation and the land use map is also spelling out what our non-motorized transportation system, what our sidewalks looks like, our block lengths, all of those things that make walkable places, which help our transit piece, which help reduce vehicle miles traveled. If, if there was a way that was feasible to, to make sure we, we have enough land area for the development we need, to put houses where we have jobs, because that's another thing we tried to do, is we tried to put houses out at the Y, because that's where a lot of jobs are going to be in the future, and along that I-90 corridor. If it was possible to get, you know, closer to the city core, that'd be great. But it's, it's challenging to find those spots where it really can work, because of a lot of existing conditions on the ground, maybe from poor planning before in the past, that we're, we're trying to deal with in, in the future. That's why, you know, the coordination piece with the city of Missoula is really important. And that's why, you know, there's some of the infrastructure pieces that we're seeing potentially there are really important to this project as well. So, yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, from a, it's, you know, the plan isn't perfect, it's, you know, but we're balancing a lot of different things in it.
I just wanted to circle us back around to if we were going to make a recommendation on the map, that was good rationale on how the map was created, but.
Yeah, yeah. But Peter, you had a.
Yeah, so if I put myself in.
We could get back to the point.
Okay, if I put myself in the position of a county commissioner, then what I'm looking at, I, I like your analogy, that this is, this is a piece of art, and that we're looking at something we can use as a tool with some real caveats. You know, the, the recommendations, the fact that you've done the research on transportation, on the forest housing interface, on schools, on water, on sewer, and all those kind of things. So the commissioners are going to look at this and say, this is a rough-grain tool that I can use to start thinking about where our growth is going to be and where we're going to see houses, and that when it comes to be fire season, I don't have to worry about, you know, a third of the population of Missoula being burnt out. So I think that's a really interesting and effective tool, but I'm worried that it's going to be, that it, what's the word I'm looking for, assume that, that they're going to make too much of this.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good point, I mean, this is a policy document, it is not regulatory, it doesn't force anything to happen, it's a suggestion. So we're, we have been hammering it through this entire process and we will hammer it to the commissioners every chance we get, that we have to, the work just starts once this thing's adopted. We are just starting this process, that there is a ton of things to do.
Any other general comments here? Jamie?
You know, I asked a very difficult question, do we have enough land to accommodate anticipated growth? But you were quite responsive and that encourages me to think that you and, and city, it's not city hall, the county government, the planners, and in your coordination with the city, there's going to be some hope that we're not going to end up 10 years down the road thinking, holy Christ, this, you know, we're not accommodating growth. And the people who can't live here are the people who can't afford the consequences of, of poor planning. So, thanks.
You're welcome, Jamie, I just, I want to make sure everyone understands that the city has been a really strong partner in this process and has, they've been with us the entire way. I know I kind of maybe bashed on them a little bit, but they, they, they're very supportive of the document and they are actually really excited about the coordination pieces and the joint planning potential and, and getting our sleeves up and getting to work on it, so that's really positive.
So every 10 years, we get to vote on our form of government. So I'm waiting for the year, I'll probably have to wait a long time to see a consolidated city-county government.
Andrew, I would say it would be nice to see some of that in the plan, you know, or I don't think we've seen comments, or I haven't seen them from these city departments and, you know, these are the questions that came up for me, I mean, if I had seen something from the MPO that said, you know, this fits with what we're doing, you know, I wouldn't have made the comment that I did. Likewise, for the question that Jamie asked, it was kind of similar to the one I had, you know, just what, how many, what does this mean? You know, there's a few numbers in the plan about population growth, but, you know, just tying it back to the map, that would, that would make me feel better, maybe others, maybe not.
Yeah, I tried to keep that stuff a little brief, but, you know, I, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to city staff and ask for, for comments, I'm sure they'll be happy to give them.
And yeah, I think, you, you mentioned it before, Andrew, but I mean, the, the technical advisory committee had representatives from all of these agencies, because I think at the outset, you all recognized that this isn't the sort of thing where you want to provide a finished product and say, hey, provide us some comments. This is the sort of thing where you want those individuals and those interests represented from day one, and they have been. So the fact that there aren't any formal comments from the MPO or from the city is not a reflection that they didn't have anything to do with this process, it's a reflection that they were so interwoven in the process that there is no set of comments, they, they were, they, they were a part of it all along. Is that ac, I, I think that's pretty accurate to say.
Yeah, are you sure you don't want to come back to the county and work for us, John? You answered better than I would.
There's, there's a group of people that met on a monthly basis and they were asked to read documents before the meeting and they were asked for comment afterwards, and it was, it was sort of a constant back and forth between this group of individuals. And that happened for 15 months before, really like before the first draft of this occurred.
They helped us.
There had already been months of discussions.
They helped us formulate the existing, the planning area profile. So the existing, basically did two things, it documented existing conditions, but we also really used them on, and this isn't something you see in the plan, but I think it's really reflective of how it came out, was we spent a lot of time researching land use trends throughout the country, when, looked at all these, you know, fancy organizations that put out publications like the ULI, the Urban Lands Institute, and Sonoran Institute, and Community Builders, and et cetera, et cetera, and how, how, how our land use patterns and how we're looking at cities are changing and what the trends are looking forward, we really want this to be a forward-looking document. And so they, they really helped with that piece too, looking at what, what are, what are the changes we can expect in our cities in the future and vetting that and talking about that. So not only did they help talk about, you know, look at, evaluate our population projections and where we think growth is going to occur, they, and talk about our existing conditions, but they really helped us look at the trends too in land use, so it was, yeah, we worked with them, I don't know, it was at least, it was probably a good year before we actually even started to going out and really putting together any sort of map, yeah.
Would it be difficult to indicate in the land use designation write-up section, how many hous, how much housing is provided in this, in this map?
No, we can add a, we can add a paragraph.
And would you also be willing to include how much prime and statewide soil is being lost in this map? I mean, I'm, I'm not going to.
I would be hesitant to do the lost thing, because.
Yeah, I know you would, but here's the thing, is that if you look at this soils map that I asked Andrew to, to make up, I think what it does is, it shows us how much of this land is prime agricultural soil, which is some of the, it is by definition the best agricultural soil in the nation, right? It meets certain national standards for agricultural soil. The statewide soil meets standards for statewide, and they're nearly as good as prime. And I guess what I would like people to understand is how much we're actually converting to other uses through this map. So for instance, the, the Broadway purple parcel that is all to be master-planned, which is, I really support, and you know, you're kind of looking at me like, are you really going to go there? But the, but the, that purple part, I mean, that purple section, or the, or the section that territorial wants us to change, I mean, those are all primed soils. And so, and we've already lost a lot of those. So I guess I would love, in addition to some quantification on the housing we're providing, would it be impossible to indicate how much we might lose?
It would be really subjective.
Oh, it would? It would be more subjective than. It would be more subjective than indicating how much housing?
Well, yeah, because we, I mean, we can, I guess we could say, in totality, potential over time, that the exercises are sort of shooting for different ends, right? Because we have, we have, within the land use designations, we have the intent and these other, other mechanisms to help protect the prime ag soils as things develop, so the clustering. So even though it might be designated as rural residential and one unit per acre, and it's prime agricultural soil, doesn't mean that each acre within that land use designation would be lost because of clustering. And I don't know how I would, I think doing that would be really hard.
I see what you're saying.
I could, we could come up with a number, like, let's say 50% is protected, but then it would be, that is a little subjective, because we don't know what the rules are going to be yet.
And we can, could we change the land use designation to mandate that when it's on prime soil, that clustering does happen?
That's a zoning tool.
Yeah, we would want to do that through zoning, yeah.
But this does provide density bonuses, as it's written.
Right, so this sets up the policy, this is the policy framework for the zoning. So we, what we're saying is we want to incorporate density bonuses and clustering in our zoning regulations, and in our zoning regulations, we would make that call on locations where maybe it should be mandatory, or maybe locations where it shouldn't be.
Okay.
Kind of the thought process.
You know, I was going to suggest a number, maybe, that might be helpful for this. Would you, maybe, like acres of land that are in particular designations?
Yeah.
Like designated commercial? Would that be helpful to what you're thinking?
Sure, that'd be good.
Or acres of land that are proposed in this plan, a land designation that increases the intensity of use?
I think...
Maybe that'd be a little squishier.
I think that would be a more objective way to do it. Yeah, I do, I like that idea.
The latter, the latter.
Yeah, break it down, so in this land use designation has this many acres of, and then you could reference the land use designation and how it's formed, because some of the land use designations aren't really calling for clustering, because they're supposed to be really dense urban places, and maybe we don't want clustering in those locations. We want to incorporate agriculture in different ways. And so we would be able to say, in this land use designation, the clustering protection would be, would be minimal, but in this designation, it would be more, would that work for you?
That would work, and I mean, it's sort of akin to the population projection, because you don't really know what the buildings would be like and so on.
Yeah. Okay.
That would be helpful.
All right, thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
Okay, so we seem to have veered more into the specific comments slash changes category and away from larger picture things. Right? Is that fair?
Yeah, but it's been very helpful.
Oh, oh, no, 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 absolutely. And, yeah, I mean, you know, always appreciative of explanations, because I think it just, you know, I mean, for all the times we've heard about the rationale and the methodology, I mean, you guys live with this, we don't, we just, you know, it helps to get refreshers. So to the extent you're horrified that we needed such a hand-holding at the outset, I hope that you feel better now.
I wasn't horrified.
Okay, so anyway...
I would, John, maybe if I could start with the big picture thing, a couple of things that I think we really maybe swung and missed on in the plan, and maybe to start the discussion, and then you guys can narrow it down from there.
Absolutely.
The first thing was, we thought about this. I mean, I, we worked on this, we've worked on this for two years, so there's probably nothing that you can think of that we haven't thought of, too. But you never know, try. The first thing that is, we definitely considered, but we didn't incorporate, was climate change and resiliency. And so we've suggested some language in a couple of different sections. One in the hazard section, and this was based off of comments, the people pointed this out, and we said, yeah, oh, yeah, we didn't, this needs to be much better highlighted. It was in the hazard section, is our climate changes, we're going to have, the hazards are going to probably get worse, especially our fire hazards and our flooding hazards. So we wanted to point out that discussion in the hazard section, but then we also think in the sections on realities, that it would be appropriate to talk about climate change in that section as well. And so we have some language that we've thrown in that, you know, that would address, we think, that big omission in the plan, that should be in there. The second thing is the wildlife concerns. We may, we didn't have the background we needed, really, I think, when we created the plan, and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks really came through and provided a lot of that background. I think there's two components that are really, really important in their comments. The first component is the three types of habitat, and Tori, are you still there? Tori can yell if I'm wrong, so just yell if I'm wrong. Okay. The three habitat types that, in Missoula, that are really important, and we think they need to be mentioned in the plan, and I can't remember, Christine, do you remember where we pointed out where?
Well, it's going to be, so you can see a large section of the table.
Oh, in the role of the county. So, yeah, okay. In, yeah, we'll get into more specifics, yeah. In the role of county section, we think we, we suggest that we bring out, call out those three habitat types. So the first habitat type that's really important in the Missoula Valley is those stream sides, riparian areas, and, it was streams, riparians, and wetlands, is that? Yep. So that, mention that as the role of the county of protecting those, that habitat type. The second is our upland habitats, grasslands, our upland grassland habitats, which are pretty unique in western Montana. I mean, eastern Montana, there are a dime a dozen, right? But in western Montana, because it's more forested, these grassy hills that we have around town are pretty unique, and they have a lot of non-game species, but they also, that really don't get enough attention. And they also house, you know, the elk, obviously, we see them looking out our window every day in downtown. So that, that habitat type that we think needs to be called out in the role of the county, and then the third thing is the geographic features, these funnels, is that the best way to say it? Funnels and, that kind of create the...
Corridors.
Yeah, that create these, that kind of draw the wildlife in as they're migrating and moving. So those three things, if you see, if you read their comment, you notice that they really highlighted all these things. We think they should be placed in the role of the county to protect those areas, those really features. Second of all, in that, in that section on realities in the document, under, we want to, would like, think the way to address it would be to create an R environment. We ignored the reality of our environment. Maybe we should highlight the reality of our environment, so that's the climate change piece, and then also our, the wildlife habitat that we have in the valley, we need to recognize that that exists in the realities. And then the third part is those, those concepts of permability and connectivity that they talk about in their comments. We think those should be brought out and mentioned in the imperatives. So the imperatives are the strategies. So those are the things that we need to do, is make sure that the wildlife has the ability for permability as they move through development, and then connectivity, which is connecting places. Is that's right? Permability, moving through development, connectivity, connecting places?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Permability is also focusing on actually having habitats within development, accommodating the green spaces, so allowing movement within, but also, you know, and to have a small home range, a small...
So that was my opinion. Based off of the comments we received, those are the two big things that I see.
I think it might be time for another quick break. Some hydration and like stretching another discussion here off the record with board members. So we'll take five and then come back in just a few here. Thanks. We've got another very productive sidebar. I feel like we're on a settlement conference or something like that. Sort of fun. Anyway, after some discussion with staff and some discussion with members of the board off the record, just about where we are kind of in our, our process, the decision has been made to continue this discussion. So the public hearing portion, the comment portion, will remain closed, but what we're going to do is, the board members are going to take the materials back, continue to sort of study, and come back to the next meeting, which I believe will be March 5th, and at that time, go through specific things that we want to talk about, potential motions, staff recommended changes based on public comment, come back with a focused list of topics, and try and get through this thing, because I feel like we've had, we've heard the last, the public comment, we've now talked, I think, about some sort of policy level considerations, and now, as we start to sort of drill down, we're probably, everybody's best served, especially the public, by us being sharp and focused, and starting with that drill-down type discussion at seven o'clock, sharp, ready to go. So I think that we will continue the public hearing then until, until March 5th. Okay, thumbs up.
And thanks again to the staff for doing an excellent job on this, and community for coming out tonight. Great questions and conversation.
John, is there anything that we need to do to make sure what was brought up by the group, that what we, we didn't make any commitments before, but I think there was sort of a tacit understanding that we would make a recommendation regarding the meadow or whatever area?
And that, that discussion is memorialized in the spreadsheet dated February 13th, 2019. So there's, I can't remember what item it is. We found it before with, regarding that piece of property.
That's going to be comment 25.
25, yep.
Yeah, and so the public, we can email, I believe, Pat, right? Yeah, she, we can email Pat the link to that, because it is publicly available right now. So she can see that and share it with her neighbors.
I'd like to make a public comment on this, that what the public may not know is that we were provided a summary of public comments and staff evaluations by Andrew and his staff. This is it. And it is an incredibly good and useful piece that helps us look at all the comments that the public has made over the last month or so, with recommendations from the staff, as well as proposed changes, rationale, affirmative or negative. And so that's the piece of, that's one piece of this information that we're going to be looking at as, between now and the 5th.
Okay. I think I, I feel comfortable with where we're at. We'll come back and we'll, we'll really kind of finish this one up and get it over the goal line, in whatever form we, we choose to do. So, okay, thanks, guys, so much for your efforts, and just thanks to everyone for their patience. This is quite a significant project, and of course, it's expected that it would, you know, take some time to get through it, so. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is communications and special presentations. There are none on the list, and I will not allow one. Committee reports, do we have any committee reports? I don't think we have any committee reports, so we'll move on to old business. And item A of old business is appointment of a committee member for the Transportation Policy Coordinating Committee, otherwise known as TPCC. It is my impression that, I think he's, Vince, am I correct that you're already on the TPCC in your capacity as a, or you're staff to it, or?
Basically staff to it, yeah.
Okay. So the reason why this is still on our agenda, Dudley, yeah, so are you, are you still willing to serve as a?
Well, I would like somebody else to step along.
Okay.
I would.
He would be perfect for it, but...
You know, I could, I could talk to the staff. I mean, my assumption is it seems like it would be inappropriate. I think it would be, but I mean, if no one else wants to, if no one else is...
Why don't you ask your staff?
Okay. And I, could I respond in email?
If it's not proper, I would.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, let me just warn you, because they may, so it takes after Tuesday. They may meet on a Tuesday when this board meets Tuesday. I just wanted to warn you about the time they're going to be... It's at 1:30.
You get to dedicate your day to service.
Michael, would you, I mean, are you interested in just taking, taking it as it's?
Oh.
Well, it sure sounds like...
So it's sort of a...
Well...
That's the reason I said I would.
Okay, well, then I think maybe we should just forego the discussion, because I do think that's probably, that could lead to some interesting circumstances.
I'm not very optimistic. I mean, I should have checked, but I'm optimistic it would be...
Okay. Well, I don't know that we need to vote on it, but I nominate you to the Transportation Policy Coordinating Committee, and it sounds like you'll accept. Is everybody, everybody on board with that one? Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Houlihan, now the TPCC committee member, and then, and then Jamie, are you still willing to serve on the Urban Growth Commission? For all of its frequent, frequent meetings?
But we are looking to kind of revitalize it with the passage of this map and stuff, because I'd be willing to be backed up for you on the non-meeting side.
Okay, so Jamie is a member of the UGC committee from the Planning Board. Any new business or referrals? Comments from Planning Board members, Peter?
Sure, I'll be quick. After our conversation last time, we sat out, I can't remember the name, but the zoning change with that eviction from the mobile phone, I talked to Madam Exdale, that was at 1:30 PM, at the local, I was in the media development.
Thank you. And there was a really, it was a productive and interesting conversation with Erin. And she said, she'd spoken, I think she spoke with John, correct me if I'm wrong, but she was, she is coming to talk to us about the city's policy and the changes in policy, and this new big program that she's putting forward this spring for the city council about what the city should be doing for the homeless population in Missoula. The question came up for those of us who weren't here at that time, was where does the zoning board, where do we fit in to conversations about whether, about evictions, about changes in zoning that result in evictions? And do we have a role in that? And so she's going to talk to us later about just what the city does. Do we have a coordinated response to people who are evicted, or people who are homeless? And what kind of resources does the city have? So I was, I thought it was, it was a really interesting conversation, and I just had it with her, because I wanted to know more about it. But as far as our group goes, she's going to come and talk to us about it.
That's great news. Yeah, and I wonder, when I went to the Land Use and Planning Committee and talked to John DiBari about it, and he said, like, so ordered, or something like that, that he would facilitate her coming to one of our meetings, so that may have been who she talked to as well, so. Okay, well, great, that's fantastic. Any other comments? All right, guys, well, thanks as usual, and we'll be adjourned.